Your Honor.
Charlie? Charlie?
You're there.
What's the problem?
Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Good, meeting's open. First one on the agenda is Strawberry Fields Estate.
How about, how about moving the minutes first? Moving the minutes first. Okay, I move that we accept the meeting, the minutes from...
September 17th.
September 17th.
Okay, September 17th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Strawberry Fields. I know it's you.
I saw you at the second hall.
Okay, before you start speaking, I have a question. At the previous meeting that we had with you, it was over at the elementary school, and there was something that seemed very wrong. And that, and that, that what, that which seemed very wrong was that there was no one from the town that showed up to witness this meeting. And because it was in a, on a different location, I feel we'll ask you for your green cards where you notify the butters. Where the butters are notified, do you have the green cards?
Yes, sir, I'm pretty sure we, uh... Got copies right here. Thought we might, uh, see those previously.
Is that the green card?
Um, well evidently it's a...
Are the receipts from, uh...
Uh-huh. Just certificates of mailing.
So, uh, please.
We prepared certificates of mailing. Notify the butters.
Did, did you notify them?
Yes, and we prepared certificates of mailing.
Do you have the receipts from...
Certificate of mailing, do not have receipts. And those are permissible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we're ready to continue.
Okay, well, we, uh, we just received the, the report, uh, from your consultant. And we, we, you know, just received it today or yesterday?
Today.
Today. So we really haven't had a chance to, to, to read, to know, adjust it, nor be able to respond to it. But if you have any question, now that, you know, both of the experts are here, we're happy to entertain them.
I, I, I do have a question. I've never seen, uh, a copy like that, uh, the receipts to the butters. Uh, Charlie, can you explain that to me, whatever it is?
This is a copy of the notification. And it's all postmarked. But there are no receipts, that they've received them, uh, and returned them. Usually we get green cards and a copy of the certified hearing receipt. And if people don't respond, the letter that was sent is returned, it all comes along back.
Marty indicates that, that's satisfactory.
Oh, okay, I just never, we've never seen anything like that. Well, we always, the tear-off sheet on the, on the return receipt, well. Okay, that's good. Continue, please.
Yeah, so, as I said, we, we would like an opportunity to, to, uh, you know, review their report and, uh, and respond to it. But in the meantime, if anybody has any questions, we're happy to address them.
This is just stamped that it was mailed.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, can you just tell me where Strawberry Fields Estate is? Where is that?
Lot 138. Down here on the left.
Where the power lines are.
Someone said, "Have it..."
Between the power lines and, uh...
Down there to Dr. Voight?
No.
Not quite that far.
But way down the hill, uh, just past Pine Creek, to the old house.
Country Hill Way.
Just south of, south of Country Hill.
It would seem to me, uh, they notify people, there should be, uh, cards that could be returned. Whether the people received these or not. But we have full time, you see, tonight. It would seem a waste of pure time and this time not to at least go through the paper.
That's, that's fine, no, I, I, I'm, I'm fine.
Oh, I, I know it's, uh...
Are you here for the, uh, Strawberry Fields?
Now, we have the, the...
Okay, alright.
Well, Mr. Chair, regarding the certificate of mailings, that, um, when there's a lot of butters, um, it's a cheaper way to notify, and it is, um, referenced in the regulations, it's, it's allowable. And what it is, is they bring the notices to the, the post office, and the post office confirms that, that, that the notices were mailed. So they lead them there, the, the post, the postmaster, whoever it is, stands, we ask them, takes them. So it's, 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 they're certifying that they actually mailed the notices. Now, I don't know if the, if a copy of the notices was provided in the NOI, it would be good to look at that. Um, was it? To see what, you know, what they actually received?
Yeah, if they're going to jump ahead with all this technology stuff, I should just...
Yeah, it's, uh... A lot of times on the certificate of mailings, um, like when we, my company files, you know, we call ahead and say, you know, "Do you mind us using..." Because it is a little, it's kind of a, it's not new, but, um, it's becoming more popular, so...
Yep, the notices are in the P E? Well, can I pay the service? Or...
Of course they have the gray stuff, so that doesn't work. Maybe you can, maybe you can have travel difference.
This is actually notice, couple pages before, is the list, that's the, uh, payment service that we did set them up.
As far as I can see, he notified everyone and explained exactly what was going to happen. The only thing missing was the meeting day.
Well, that's not, uh, the meeting day is up to us.
Yeah, we, we've found a government package on that. We've had butters who've gone before, communicated that it had changed, and they have to go, so... We're going to, uh, sort of, uh...
Yeah, there's usually a way for someone that receives that notice to call to find out when the hearing is... As long as there is... Yeah, sure. Yeah, so information about the project and the date and month of meeting can be obtained by calling the DITM Conservation Office. And as long as, you know, there's somebody...
Is their responsibility?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's good, okay.
We keep this if you want, right?
So I think, um, just... They received the comments late today, and, and you just received them tonight. Um, so they pretty much all depressed.
Yeah.
So you really haven't had a chance to read through it, and, and it's really something that you should read, um, through.
Yeah, I, as I'm, as I'm going through, I can see there's a lot there to, to digest.
Right, so it's...
It's written, you got it by the WPA, by the state, and by, by...
Right, right.
And it's, um, there's a lot there to interpret and to see where it's, where it's going.
That, that's right, and I, and I, you know, it would be difficult for me to really, you know, go through it, um, meaning, meaningfully, um, because there isn't a lot to it. They have, they have some work to do. I understand that, um, there may be revised plans that were submitted to the ZBA that we don't have.
That's true.
Um, so I, I don't know if the commission received the copies, revised?
We received, last, last meeting, we received nothing.
Okay, so...
We, we submitted everything, I have, uh, I have... Transmittals are signed, so...
So we...
And everything was submitted correctly.
The revised, the revised plans?
So, I think we'll quickly want to get into this. They, they've asked for calculations to show that we can meet a certain condition if required. We provided supplemental calculations to the ZBA, stormwater calculations. We're asking you to serve that role.
So, basically, the plan that you have...
All, all the plans that we've submitted.
Okay, well, that's good.
We did, I know a little bit more.
Okay, well, that's good. I was, I was nervous there. So, okay, so that's, that's good.
The folder is on the bottom. Yes.
Can you hear him, Jack?
Yeah, he said the folder's on the bottom.
Okay.
So, so we went through, um...
Jack, can you interpret? Thank you.
Yeah, Marty's going over now.
Yeah, I'm just kind of, I'm really, really high level, so, you know, so, so Beta, um, it was actually a team that, that reviewed this, so we had a stormwater professional in Massachusetts P E that looked at the stormwater, and to, um, to peer review the plans and the, and the great calculations to confirm that they'd met the DEP stormwater regulations and standards. And then we had the performance standards section of the wetland regulations. You know, you have your resource areas, um, water drainage, wetlands, flood plain, um, bank, you know, land, and that's it. And whether or not the project, um, complied with those standards. And then we also had our wildlife architects take a look at the, the overall, um, project as proposed, and what impacts the project would have, um, to wildlife habitat provided by areas that you're, that's under your jurisdiction. Um, we also took a look at the, um, the buffer zone, the hundred-foot buffer zone adjacent to the resource areas, um, because that is under your jurisdiction, and you, you are allowed by regulation to, um, condition work in that, in that buffer zone.
Yes.
If you feel that, um, it's necessary to protect the resource area and the interest that that resource area is providing. One of them is wildlife habitat, and one is public water supply. Um, and this site, I think, if, if you recall, this site is a really important site. It's a headwaters to, um, the public water supply, surface water supply, at least a summer site. So, you know, so that's how we approached the project, it was more of a team effort, different, um, you know, technical professionals took a look at it. And we took a really, really deep dive into, into the plans, so that this, so this is a good basis going forward. Um, that, so they will be able to address, um, the comments and, and really know where we're coming from. There's going to be no surprises going forward for them, they're all here. Um, so, you know, we feel that currently the project doesn't meet the regulations and the, and the standards, stormwater standards, and the regulations, doesn't comply with the performance standards they need. The, it's, the burden's on them to really provide the commission with more information to justify, um, their proposed project, and to, um, support why they're, they feel their project's not going to have adverse impact on, um, the adjac, the adjacent resource areas and the interest that they protect, um, as, you know, as well as, um, the vertical complements out there, which generally is, is under your jurisdiction, because they lie within an area that is under your jurisdiction. So, um, another point our stormwater professional made was, you know, we did take a look at, um, GZA's comments that they had on behalf of, um, the ZBA. And a lot of our, a lot of our stormwater-related comments are, are similar to theirs. So they're, they're, they, they're confirming each other with each other that they needed to, to address that. So, it, this project is a bigger project than last time. It's, you know, it goes across the, the, um, the power lines, it's much more of, it has much more impact to the upwind areas than the last project. Um, and, um, as you know, um, the commission, I mean, the, the comments here are very similar to the original comments made for the last project, that the applicant never overcame. And, and as you probably saw, the commission denied that project. So, I think that, um, like I said, I think now they have what they need to really, um, move forward with addressing, um, what we feel the commission should, um, ask for, um, so...
Okay, thank you. It is, um, I don't know if you have anything else to add, or you just want to go through this, these documents, and then we'll continue it till next month?
Yes, uh, we don't, no, we cannot really go through...
Alright, that's what I, that's why I'm putting it forth for continuance. Okay, uh, Ma- Marty, you're through for...
Yeah, I'm through.
For now, okay. Okay, um, I move that we continue the hearing on Strawberry Fields till our November meeting.
I second that.
All in favor? Alright, opposed? Motion carries.
You know, when you're, is it the third Wednesday?
Thursday now.
It's, oh, that's right, Charlie's, yeah, a number of times, and I will remember that. Thursdays, yes.
Thursday, four, seven, now.
Is it nineteen? Yes.
Yeah. No, Thanksgiving's the next one.
Alright.
And your website still has Thursday, Thursdays in mind, so...
You gotta change the website, I think it still says Wednesday, no?
Yeah, it does, it still does. I almost had a heart attack yesterday.
At seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, here.
And just for the applicant's benefit, um, you know, we're going to need, we're going to, depending on the information they submit, we're going to need time to review it. So they really would need to submit their information ten days in advance of the meeting for us to really be able to look at it and, and, you know...
Fair enough.
I'll have some stuff for you next, next meeting. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
On this list?
I wish we could visit.
I'm sorry?
I wish we could visit.
I know. Well, I, I come in town, I come, and we're best friends. Well, the world's been...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maris Lane. Lot two. D P number 017, 0437.
I want to deal with that later.
We had that, I can read it.
Okay, that's all, we'll deal with it later in the meeting.
And I haven't heard a word from her. And a phone...
You didn't, Maris Lane, she called here.
Excuse me, may I just ask a question? I'm a butter of Maris Lane's property. Lot one is directly behind my house. And I know the building is going up currently. I never let a butter say anything on that property.
Can you give the client a turn, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you give the client a turn? Let him have a turn, please. Let him, let him, let him present, let him present his...
I'm, I'm just simply asking a question, Miss Al.
Alright, but, but let him go first.
I'm fine.
She's talking about a different wall.
I can't hear you either.
She's talking about a different wall.
I'm talking about lot one, not lot two.
Okay.
Your butters would have known about a lot one. I was never notified of lot one at all. None of those were, ever.
There were plans for lot two, lot eight, revised plans, lot two, lot eight, and nine, and that's it. And there's enough for everybody to see.
You also asked about green cards, mine was never assigned, it was ripped off my letter before I received it.
Mine is from, this is on the buttes that send you, never received us.
Can you drop that thing so I can read your lips? Tell me who you are.
Hi, my name's David Santos.
Jeff Santos.
David Santos.
And who are you with?
I can't wait for this to be done, you know.
I'm with, uh, prime engineering, representing my client, uh, Rick Berset, with Mars Land Development LLC. Uh, today we're permitting a single-family dwelling for lot two, Maris Lane. So we were here last month with plans that just entered the hundred-foot wetland buffer zone. We had originally placed the septic system in the front of the yard, because there had been historical drainage issues with the rear of the lot. So we have honored the conservation commission's requests. We pushed the septic, uh, outside of the hundred-foot buffer. Um, all septic components are outside of the hundred-foot buffer. Um, and only grading in this driveway here, this is on the opposite side of the street of the wetlands as well, just to make a note of that. So what we're proposing to do here is just construct a single family as well in lot of Maris Lane. Um, the grading here, uh, is very indicative of what was approved in 2012 on those lots there. Um, except we just don't have the, the septic in the front of the house anymore. We have it on the side, outside of the hundred-foot buffer. I can answer any questions, if you'd like to go over anything's grading, or anything like that.
It's okay now, Jim? Got it?
I'm just taking a look, okay.
Okay, here's the hundred-foot buffer, right here. So you are... The hundred-foot buffer zone actually goes through lot one? If I'm reading this properly?
Correct, it does go through lot one. Lot one was, uh, permitted back in 2017. It was approved in, uh, November of 2017, it was issued an order of, um, compliance, I'm sorry, an order of conditions.
So this is...
I guess the only question I have is, originally, I know totally different things, but originally you were, you might have to go back to the water house now?
Correct, yes, yes. So, you'll have to go back to the water house for all of these lots? Um, I wanted to get approval with the conservation commission before going out of the water.
So you're doing a prep test there, or it's already been done?
No, the prep tests have already been done.
Just because you moved everything, and it was probably already approved where it was?
Yeah.
Now that you're shifting things around?
Yeah, you'll have to...
You've got to make sure that it doesn't impact any property lines and all that, so...
He's part of the, he's part of the property all day.
Yeah, he's eleven feet, so, yeah, it's supposed to be ten feet, so...
Yeah. The grading is...
Shut up and walk, huh? Is that what you said?
The grading, the lot originally had the septic system in the front, in the front, because it makes more sense for grading built, but we moved that off to the side here. Uh, historically, lot four had a problem, the original developer for this subdivision, they actually built the house a little too low. So we were hired to come through and create a drainage easement and a drainage solution for them. Um, so we were really hesitant on this lot, which is up gradient of lot four. We are hesitant on filling a lot in the, in the rear, that's why we aimed that in the front. But we're very comfortable with having it fit off here to the side, um, to not fill anything down to the, uh, north of the, uh, lot there.
So it's a mounded system?
It will, it will be mounted, but not, uh, only like one or two feet higher than what's the current grade of the road.
But versus lot one, will it be higher?
No, no. Because it follows...
See, Alex, you're asking now?
It comes down, because this is the gradient here, and that continues up on this one here. So that, so that gradient is going to be the same here. Here is over there.
So while lot one was permitted with a, um, a drainage, a drainage solution just in case anything was, was built in the front, so it actually drains down the property lines to not create any flooding act, so...
We're just trying to minimize as much water as we can to affect anyone.
The, uh, there are catch basins on the street, I, oh, I think I saw four of them within the first four lots.
Yeah.
Uh, where does this water go?
So the water from this lot, uh, follows this drainage easement in the rear here, and that goes around to the... See if I have a good plan that illustrates this. So here's just an overall, um, view here. So we're here on lot two with this, uh, drainage easement. This drainage easement comes across, there's actually a, um, a drainage pipe here that, that we were hired to design.
So all those catch basins are tied into that?
Uh, the catch basins are not, the catch basins go right down the road.
Okay, alright.
The, the grain that we're doing...
I was out there because there was a, a person here at our last meeting saying that the water was going on the street, and, and I'm looking at the berm on the street, which was about six inches higher than most of the road, and I'm saying, no way could that water be going into another person's property, and unless it was pumped, not pumped, but drained from those catch basins. But if the catch basins are going east, um, it's not happening.
No, all those catch basins tie in and go to a drainage lot, um, in the rear here, which I show on...
And I was told that they also were going...
Let, let us finish, please.
You'll have your turn.
Okay, Maris.
So the catch basins go down the center of the road here. Any grading in the rear of the lot is picked up by those pipes I showed you earlier, and actually also, um, brought to the drainage lot.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions, I, I don't know if anybody else?
No, it looks like you, you, you changed what we asked. You meant the septic, not the hundred-foot, Maris.
Jim, Jack?
Yeah, oh, it's, uh, it's out of the way, there's a couple of people.
On lot, this is lot two now, any, anybody in the audience?
On lot two.
Specifically with the drainage issue, he's saying that there's no drainage that's flowing towards me. I know for a fact that there is a drainage called... that there is a drainage culvert under that road that's going right to the rear of my house. Comes up, pointing like this. I watch them.
Let's have a little history lesson.
I watch them put that in.
Let's have a little history lesson. This is in a few subdivisions.
Let's have a little history.
Listen to me.
Has anybody driven down there and seen how far below grade level I am?
Hey.
I walked it.
Just pay attention.
I walked it last week.
Approximately 50 years ago, your son's grandfather wanted to build a house.
Yep.
He bought a piece of land from the Bedayville.
Yep.
Which is up there. When it was being dug, he was told by Gilbert Loeb Senior, Jim Caro, and Royal Builders, Mr. Lawrence, that this foundation is too low.
Really?
Raise it up about three feet. It's going to cost me too much money. It should be fine.
Well, let me put it to you this way.
The top of your...
He's speaking.
Your current town's building inspector says that subdivision wouldn't do there if he was there.
The top of your foundation is approximately no more than 14 inches over the center of the road.
Okay, so because my foundation is where it is, it gives a builder the right to fill six feet above my ground level? And what house is there? And fill in wetlands?
Your foundation is not...
And fill in wetlands. Wait a minute. And fill in wetlands. That was no wetlands?
No.
No?
No.
Mrs. Limmel, would you like to tell me that there was wetlands on the backside of both our properties? I have pictures of box circles. I have pictures of everything. The D E P has been involved. There is a natural pond right behind my house.
Yeah, behind your house.
Behind my house, wait, you have silvings going through in lots eight and nine. Yes.
Nobody said anything when you made your front yard. You made your front yard.
My yard from the wetlands in that property, and I have pictures of it. The front wetlands of that property run off into my yard. Don't tell me they don't. I know it's on this entire committee right now. I am calling for closure. Just so you know, because I am a single female homeowner. And you people have not listened to me at all through this whole phase. When that brook right next to your house went over?
Yeah.
You know where that drained? Right to the corner of Mr. Strange's house, right across me, and right out to the back of that property.
We're working on lot two right now.
Lot two is where the brook drained to.
We're going to work on lot two.
Your builder also told me.
He's standing here, and he doesn't want, he doesn't want a history lesson of Dyke.
Neither do I, but his builder...
Get his job done.
His builder also told me he was not responsible for the drainage or the height of the road. That's your builder, because it's something that he told me outside last year.
Hey, and how about this? When they initially started going into that development, they used to ride my quad through there, and everyone here...
You are who? Have you signed it?
Peter Blue.
Please, no, who's my...
Hey, please let this guy speak a minute.
Okay, your name and address? Peter Blue, 800 Center Street. Peter Blue, 800 Center Street. So what I'm trying to get at is, everyone here that's done construction to Forest Street, I have, Jack, I'm pretty sure you've got, I really don't mind, but everyone else out there is skitters. If a skitter doesn't get stuck in the middle of some other place in some other, like, condition, and it can go through six feet of mud, why does a skitter get buried probably 50 yards into that place? And I'm going to dig it all out. And when I, yeah, it falls from that, why would it do that? And when they dug it out, why would the entire thing go up however deep the puddle is, where?
Why would it have to fall down?
Completely flooded with water, is what I'm trying to say.
Let somebody else have a turn, will you?
He's like someone to sit with him.
What I'm trying to say is, the entire thing filled with water, not that it was up to here. I was probably like five feet up. It was up to here. So if that wasn't wetlands, how would anyone have thought? How would a skitter get stuck if a skitter can go over anything?
How could he walk through it and make the water up to his chest?
You couldn't even walk?
He does nothing. This town was wrong. And you're like, I'm going to make it up there. I'm sorry, but I'm in a boat.
And I bet...
And I have a $500,000 house with junk.
And I bet all the money in my pocket that no one here could go from the beginning of Center Street to where that bridge is. And that's not even a bridge, you guys call that, that's literally just going with wetlands.
It is, it's not a living thing.
But either way, I said, all the money in my pocket, $10,000,000, if none of you would build a block from the beginning of Center Street to even the back of my 5A6, you would sink in and you would not be getting up. It was a quicksand. If I need to, you can go on Google Maps. And I'm sure if you go on Google Maps and you go farther back, I have pictures of my grandfather half the time in this driveway. And I'm sure you can go and flood it and find pictures of two feet of water in that place. It's not hard. It's real, it was overlooked at the beginning and it got after a long period.
And he fixed that back so we no longer flood. The subdivision happened, we flood on both sides of my driveway now.
I didn't want to come here at all, just like none of you did. I know you didn't.
We don't want to be there bitching, but I'm losing my...
It's not fair.
I'm going to try to access on how my parents lived it.
It's not fair for me to have this whole waste.
You wouldn't want it in your backyard, you want it flooded into your house. Walk in my backyard instead of the subdivision and look where that road is.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask the engineer first. This one right here, so can you just clarify for the people in the audience? It's out of the buffer zone.
Correct.
All proposed work. And if you could clarify and try to explain to them relative to this lot, where the drainage goes?
Yeah, so specifically for this lot, this lot is on the opposite side of the street of the said wetland. So all of the drainage from this lot, I'll turn this so you can take a look at that. So all of the drainage on this lot travels down this drainage easement in the rear of the lot.
Here's my question, where's Mrs. Limmel's house and where's my house?
Uh, which house, right?
800 Center Street, the other side of the road.
I'm at 760.
So if we look at this right here, an overall view, this is the plan from back in 2012.
Which was wrong.
So...
Across the street, right?
We're working on this lot across the street.
They're using part of the lease.
We're just talking lot two, so we're just going to show you.
Lot two crosses the street, lot two never crossed the street before.
Okay, we've got to explain the impacts. So if you guys have the question, so we can just get down to the root of it.
I was told by the engineer that the drainage goes both north-east and northwest. It goes both ways.
All I want to say too is that...
You're going to try to explain, at the engineer, as you drew it up?
So here, this is the way we see it on Google Maps. We have north going up, just so it's easier. So here's the blue property. And the lot we're talking about right now is this lot right here, lot two. So all of the drainage goes down here, and we pick it up in full verse. That runs to this basin in the rear here. So even if this lot sheds water south, it's picked up by the grading on lot one and brought back to the rear. That's to prevent any flooding in the front of the yard here.
Charlie, he's trying to explain it.
Alright, so here's my question. When you guys built that house and you build that one right now, so you built that one, and these two existing houses are already going. If I was standing right there, this lot right here, at the corner of these two properties, that lot, probably eight foot deep to where you get to the meshed flat crap or the hovers, pretty much that's. So if she's six feet lower than this house, I'm six feet lower than that house, the water's supposed to drain that way. Either way, it's going to go to the apartment house that's back here. And then I'm right here, it's all going to go. Like, no matter what, you can build a mound right there, where is it going to go? It's going to go down, every time.
So everything from this half of lot one?
You can't expect every bit of water to go that way.
Would you like to see part of a picture of Mrs. Limmel's house with lot one right now? The ground level pointing at her house is that way.
How about that? If you build lot two right there, I believe lot three is an existing house?
He's going to flood.
His driveway is down here, it's underground driveway. That's going to flood.
The lot four has the underground driveway. And that's actually what we came in here to fix.
Lot three.
I'd like to stay on lot two.
Problems, not really lot two, it's a...
Problems on lot two, the problem is a little something here.
Well, then, then, because of that, then you shouldn't have anything to say. We are dealing with lot two. We, I'm satisfied... Lady, be quiet. I am satisfied with what, lot two, what they have done with it, how they redesigned it. I was there walking the street. And I could see where the, any extra water would go into those drains, even in the street.
If it went down the street, it would have been the same, the patterns.
If we ran out, any excess water from that lot would actually go on a
Eastern direction.
Away from, away from the houses.
Wait, it's going to, wait, it's going to your bar?
We're dealing with lot two.
That would still go towards other houses, wouldn't it? It's going to your bar. I have no reason to disrespect you, you're not even thinking.
You guys have any, uh, more questions on this region?
I don't, I do not have any questions.
Hey, if there's no motion...
Charlie? Charlie? I make a motion to accept lot two as newly designed. It's lot two.
Can I just ask you exactly where lot two is? One next to lot one. Where the lot?
Yeah, the foundation, they don't know.
I'll make a motion to second it. The northern conditions, so lot two. Enter issue an order, yes. To accept lot two, to resign, you issue an order of conditions. Oh, available?
Mr. Santos? Thank you.
Land to lot eight?
Yeah, it's over here, huh? So let's take the other one first, this is lot two?
That's lot two.
I guess I'm looking here. Yeah, lot one, lot two.
So that's lot eight?
Okay, let me see, I'm going to go...
That's, uh, same lot two?
Okay, we got it.
Yeah, yeah, we got it now. So that's eight, they have part of nine. Do we have an eight down here? Yeah.
Um, we're, we're, yes, should be eight. I didn't know.
Charlie also?
I resent the best, I 50, yeah. No, of course, right to the, right to the, right to the...
No, that's the over there. Over there is not one. You're in the over there.
You know, I'll set the compliance on something.
So over there is just a high street over? But it's not considered the...
Correct.
That's the one.
That's the berm.
That's two. That's two. It went there, the first one, well, you could see them all, that's three. Range is four. Five.
The house, the house is...
Six, seven, eight. Eighty-nine, I'm sure, like, neither of them are there. You all don't have enough to fund that, I tell you. I'm off. You need to walk up here all day. You just go all the way down.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, we got two different plans here, I'm saying, um...
Are they dating, Charlie?
Oh, let's take a look.
You guys have Google Saturday, will be...
What you were saying. That's eight, we'll, I'll tell the side. I think we have a bunch of... Okay, um... Charlie, we're going to go to lot eight now. Okay.
So similarly to lot two, this is lot eight. We moved in, we took the conservation commission's comments into consideration, and we pushed all the septic components outside the 100-foot wetland buffer here. The overall grading actually didn't change, this lot was very close. Previously, we were violating that 100-foot buffer by only a couple of feet. So we just pushed over the septic here, no design changes, no grading changes. Just simply the system is about five feet to the south there.
Okay, and your wetland barriers, where are they?
Exactly, we have a right-hand corner.
Right-hand corner?
No, no, you've got to have hay bales or siltation area.
Okay.
Where is...
So we would propose, actually, I don't have it shown here, but we propose to have that hay bale and silt fence right along the perimeter of the conservation use line. We ask that that would actually be added into the order of conditions, that that's expected. To ensure that there's a hay bale and silt fence during construction.
It's always a good idea to put it right on your plan so we can see what you're going to do with the siltation fence and barrier and all that stuff. It's a lot better if it's on the plan.
It's always easier, and just because most of the people see these things, and then they'll know. Like, if it wasn't there, I was just system installing. And it wasn't there, whatever, then they destruct that fence and they, everyone works off that plan.
Okay.
So it's actually better to have it already in the plan, I think.
Without a doubt. Without a doubt.
So this plan still needs to go in front of the board of health. If it's an option, I would like to have that shown on there for the board of health and as well as in your...
For the siltation barrier. Charlie, we're going to, you know, do the siltation barrier roughly at elevation thirty, roughly. Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, right along the limit of historically placed, there was in 2012, these conservation restricted use limits. So we would go ahead right there, wherever the tree line is, if it's...
The conservation restricted area was protected under our original order of conditions for the road and the...
They need to put, when they do their work, they need to set some, some, some spots. And it's protected, correct? Okay.
So, yes, at elevation thirty.
Okay. I don't have, I don't have any more questions.
Kevin?
No, I don't.
I'll entertain the motion.
Well, go on.
Charlie?
No, no, the audience? Anybody from the audience?
Well, I have a couple of questions, but, um, keep being told to shut up. I'm, I'm not a woman to be seen in that.
This is lot eight, do you have a question on lot eight?
Well, ask the question.
Ask, ask away, what's the question?
On lot eight?
Okay, on lot eight, where is the drainage going to?
Dave, can you help us out with that?
Yes, so the drainage here actually follows, um, existing grade, which comes over here to this, this, uh, wetland in the north of the lot. Um, any other, uh, drainage comes to the front and is picked up by, I believe, a catch basin in the, in the front. Um... But for the most part, it follows existing grade down towards the, the wetland.
So, there is drainage going into an already wet area.
And if the drainage would be on the street, the house, so that when you raise this property six feet to the street, and that property along the one next to it are now six feet higher than the street, and I'm looking six feet up at a house in my backyard, so the dead wood is not running off those two properties, what's gonna get and see that lot standing up?
The, the road existing here, uh, is at elevation thirty-four, to the left of the plan here, you see that? And then it's thirty-three coming down, catch basin is here. So all drainage that's in the front of this lot, actually, is picked up...
The blocks themselves, what the board is doing, pouring, and the ground is not...
Hey, wait a minute. The lady over there, did you get your answer, did you get your question answered, please?
No.
Okay, will you give her a chance, please?
Yeah, I think you just finished it, go ahead.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
You know, you're still going with it.
The drainage from this lot, uh, is directed into where it is existing, existingly going, uh, here to the wetland. Um, anything in the front, from, from filling the front of the house, gets pulled by the road in north, which is away from Center Street, into these catch basins, and then taken north.
So, is it, is anybody going towards Center Street?
In, for this lot? No.
On that wet area?
This is a wetland in the rear of the lot that's, that's off the, off the property.
No, it's on the right, it's been there, and then you have thirty plus.
Jesus.
So, Jesus, well, I own the property, like the back of my hand, I've been here for thirty...
I'm about ready to call the police to have you evacuated.
My husband, my wife, so...
So if you want to hear it.
I'm trying, I'm trying to understand everything, to get it clear in my mind.
Yep.
Um...
So this is the lot?
My husband passed away five years ago, so now, this is my property that I need no, I need no more information. And I'm sure you gentlemen are in the same age group, where women was to be seen and not heard, and were not supposed to ask questions. So now I'm asking questions, and I'd like to get them answered, I'm trying to be...
We're trying to give you answers.
And I'm, I'm trying to be polite about it.
And we wish to give you answers, but we cannot have any other people interrupting you, or us.
Okay, I just, I, I need to process this.
He is giving you, he is giving you an answer, which I thought was satisfactory, but, but if you, if you have another question for him...
I'm, 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 I'm asking, those props, that, and, um, you only want me to talk about lot eight, 'cause I can't talk about the whole subdivision itself, so I forbid. I just wanna know, is it going towards Center Street? Right now, and I would have to say this, right at this, at this day, I do not have a problem like Cheryl does. Cheryl is sort of a minute. I, I'm not, I'm not bad. I do have a wet area in the front of my, in the front of my property, a, a small area. I can deal with it for now, I would like to get that cleaned up, that's another situation you can talk about to somebody at one point, but I just need to know, how much drainage am I looking at to come towards my property? That's my question. I'm at seven sixty Center Street, what's coming towards me?
So, uh, you're, you're right here on, on this, on this map, this is your property here.
Okay.
And we are talking about, uh, this is lot eight up here, with existing wetlands
Yeah.
up to the north. So, the existing grade flows into the wetlands, um, and we are not changing that. The, the flow is still gonna go through the wetlands there. Anything in the front here gets picked up by catch basins and brought up here as well. So this lot has no drainage that is running south.
Okay, so...
Towards Center Street in your property.
My other question is, and, and it could be just appearances. When you have a drainage going north, it appears that as you travel up this road, things are going uphill. So how does water drain uphill?
The, the drainage basin in the rear is actually a lot lower than, than the road and everything else here.
I know, but you're chatting on the road, and the road's going up, so...
The pipes under the ground actually go down, to the rear.
Okay, that's what I didn't know.
Yep.
That's, yeah, that's what I didn't know.
Yep.
Because appearances, as you drive up the road, you're thinking, how, how can that happen? You know, how can that go uphill? You can't go uphill.
Yeah.
But it's getting level, and made to go downs with the grains up.
The grains up, well, I did not see the drainage going in, because there was too much stuff in there, and we needed to drive it, I can't walk it. I'm handed that, I cannot walk the way. I have to rely on my car, to get in my car and drive it down the road and see what's going on. I, I don't have any other choice. Um, right now, and I'm not supposed to talk about this, but I want to mention it. Okay, and apparently, I can't ask about it.
You can ask.
I was, I was never notified about lot one. Right now, lot one is, the house is going up, eh, right now.
Would she have, would she have been in a, uh, notified?
Eh, yes.
That was back then.
I was not notified. At all. So, you know, I'm trying to shut my mouth, and, you know, say, well, we're gonna do what we're gonna do. 'Cause no matter what I say, it doesn't matter, because they don't wanna hear what I'm gonna say, or what even questions I'm, I'm gonna ask. But, I'm, I'm watching that lot one, uh, that house going up, and I don't, and, and I don't know how that's gonna affect me. Lot eight, nine is far enough away, I don't know if it's gonna affect me, probably not. I'm, I'm thinking lot one and lot two is what's gonna affect my property. So that's my question.
Charlie, lot one was approved, what, three years ago, or, or almost three years ago?
Well, you said like...
At this point in time, I don't have recollection as to the green cards, and who, I mean, who has...
Well, I'm just saying, I'm asking these questions now, because I never got notification.
Well, okay, and I, and I'm saying that I personally don't have recollection as to the engineer of the day, because, well, I don't think it was these people.
Well, the, the developer has changed a few times.
I agree, I know that.
They have actually come to me, they went to my, came to my house to talk to me about the development. The, the fellow that was before the one that's there now had come to me.
Yeah.
And they asked about it, and I said to him, I'm telling you right now, you're gonna lose your shirt. That's all wetland, there is a big problem back there, you're gonna lose your shirt. Sure enough, it went bankrupt. It happened. There is a problem with that development, and unfortunately, it's gonna continue no matter, no matter who asks questions, or who objects to anything. And I keep, I, they keep telling me, they worked on it, and they're fixing it, and whatever. Whatever. All I know is, I just wanna know, remain with people, and how do I contact it if I have problems? That's all I wanna know. If I have a problem as a result of this development, who do I owe? That's, that's my question.
Take his name off the, uh, engineering list. But I, I don't see lot, either of these, these lots being a problem for you.
I mean, my, my, my house...
If something happened from ten years ago...
My house is probably, I don't know, I'm guessing maybe one hundred feet away from that house called up now. And that's fine, as long as it, as long as it doesn't affect my property, and ruining, you know, and for me getting, taking in water in my home as a result of that, I have no problem.
No, I'm, I'm serious, Ross, I went there, I checked out those drainage pipes. He gave you a very legitimate answer about the pipes going deeper into the, the ground.
Yes, he did, yes, he did.
So that the water would flow elsewhere.
But nobody's ever...
But it still goes into, it still connects into the same wetlands. They, uh, the water that was originally there, they got dumped elsewhere, it has to go into that same basin.
Now, that, that, that's essentially it's way in there.
So, it, what it does is it, is it distributes it, and it gives it more, actually more opportunity to sink into the ground before it gets to you.
I, I'm...
So, in reality, in theory, it should be, you know, it should be better.
Un, unfortunately, um, because my husband and I built that house ourselves, it's like private, everything. I do know that most of the land there is clay mixture, so it acts like a bowl.
Yeah.
And it just sits there.
And when it gets wet, it swells, and it creates, uh, hot pan, and, and becomes impermeable.
That's right, and then you end up with a problem. So, that's the reason why I'm concerned, is I know, I know the soil there, I know, I know that there is a problem. That's the reason why I'm concerned, I'm, I'm all for progress. People wanna come in town, that's, that's great. As long as it doesn't create a problem to those who...
And, and, and I, I'm with you a hundred percent on what you're saying.
You know, as, as long as, you know, the, the people that are impacted by the development is not affected by flooding in their own houses. I, I've been there since nineteen seventy-eight, so I've been here a really long time. I, you know, I just don't want my property ruined, that's all.
Right, and, and that's quite legitimate.
I'm not bringing a stick, I have a stick to fail.
Okay, right, but right now, I would like to go back to lot eight, to get us back on track. And this is actually, the water is going in the opposite direction from you. He is, he has shown that the septic system is a hundred feet away from the wetland. His property is greater than fifty feet from the wetland, because we have a bylaw that says you cannot, there is no construction within fifty feet of a wetland, uh, I'm sorry, no touch zone, fifty feet, no construction within a hundred, and he is, he is staying out of all those areas. Can he contour the land? Yes, he can contour the land, but he can't do it in such a way that's going to flood somebody. But his contours are going up back or to that drainage stream. And, you know, and really, lot eight, I see, uh, as, as a...
Lot eight and nine must give a problem for Cheryl. But, it, you know, just the, the thing is, there, there was two things. They built the road over wetland, which caused the initial problem to begin with. It was, it overwetlanded. And my question, like, to the back top of the development, with how it's set this? The, the big huge amount of dirt right now, and I know, I know there's wetlands beyond that, so they can all do beyond that.
Yeah, by law, a person has the right to, to go through wetlands once, to go through, to access highway in the back. In, in order for them to go through any wetlands, and, and I, I don't really recall now, 'cause this, this, like you say, there's been several contractors over many years.
It's very, it's been one after another.
And, and I'm being serious when I say, I don't remember everything that went on a number of years back. But they have to make new wetlands, uh, at least equal to the square footage of wetlands that they filled, which would have been in the back. So, all these drainages are going into that newly created wetland way in the back. So the water which...
Well, now it's...
So, the, again, theoretically, the water which was going there is still going in the same basin, but in a devious route. Deviated route.
But there is still water in the other pot, like, like, think about it. My house, my house is here, and the other one is on Cheryl's, above Cheryl's land.
Now...
That, that one there is so full of water all the time, it's, it's terrible. Mine has some water, but it's manable. It needs, it needs attention, and I don't know who to see, because that wa, I don't think the water is draining into the factor of, of the street.
Okay, if it, if there is a pipe there and it's not doing it, you would contact the street department to make sure the pipe is clean.
Yeah, could be caught in debris.
And that, and that could, if that's the case, that would alleviate the whole problem. I, I, I'm just listening to you, I don't know, I don't know what's there.
We tried to address that problem, and we were told that the street and house wouldn't do that, because the drain pipe is on the edge of my property. So how am I supposed to clean out a pipe that I can't, I, and I can't get to the other side? 'Cause that property belongs to somebody else.
Well, I...
So, and there's, and there's all kinds of leaves and stuff, and I would...
Why don't you give them another call and, and see if, if...
Yeah, if there's something to come out, at least take a look, and then, uh, this, they can get a better picture of what you're talking about. I'm trying to picture what you're talking about, Charlie.
It's, it's, it's not a big, it's not a huge area, it's maybe, I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna say four, forty feet, maybe, thirty, forty feet from where the road, where the stop wall is.
Okay, I, I think, I think... Okay, I'm gonna make a motion on lot eight to accept lot eight as drawn and to issue an order of conditions.
The revised...
The revised plan dated October seventh.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And, and...
Motion carried.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, I'm very confused, what was the revision on lot eight?
The septic system was within a hundred foot, was a hundred feet from the wetland, and he had to move it beyond a hundred feet.
It was just barely in it, within a hundred feet, and he's...
So he had to move it.
And he slid the septic system a little out of it, so now, now it's not gonna be impacted.
So that's, that's...
He put it closer to the driveway.
He put a throttle bit.
Okay, I, I, that's all, I, I wasn't getting it, that's all on lot eight.
I mean, just wanted to make sure, you have the answer, that you're able to, you want to make sure you're heard.
I'm, I'm...
Okay, uh, we get number eight here as well.
Moving right along. Charlie?
Okay, lot nine?
Charlie?
Sir, can you tell me your name?
I can't hear.
What is your name, please?
Phil, Phil, sorry, that.
Charlie? Lot nine?
Yes.
Oh, good. Let us know you're here.
All right, so here on lot nine, uh, very similar situation to lot eight. Uh, when we brought it in a month ago, we were a matter of inches actually inside of the hundred-foot, hundred-foot buffer, so here, we actually moved the septic system over, uh, even less. So, and all the septic components are outside of the one-hundred-foot buffer. Um, no changes to the design, no changes to, to grading or anything like that here. Um, simply just moving the septic system over.
This is dated, uh, October, so... Okay, I, I mean, it was so close last time, and he did it. Uh, I, I have no questions, uh, on it all, I, I could see that he did what he said he was gonna do already.
Yeah, uh, on every subdivision, on every building lot so far, that we've looked at... Yeah, uh, on every subdivision, on every building lot so far that we've looked at tonight, you've had propped drywall.
Correct, yes.
Can, can you brief me a little bit on a propped drywall?
Yeah, so that's a proposed, uh, drywall that essentially takes all of the, the roof runoff, the roof drainage, and brings it underground, so there's no, uh, surface shearing or anything like that. Um, it's something that
And, and pumping, pumping in these wells?
Uh, that is a, a six foot, um, in diameter, uh, uh, basin there. That's typically what the Board of Health likes to see.
Six feet?
Six foot in diameter, so about three foot, uh, radius, so probably about this big.
And how deep?
How deep?
Um, for this one, I believe actually it's, it's also six feet.
Also six feet. It, it would have been a lot easier for me if you'd have said drywall.
It's a, yeah, it's a drywall, yep.
So, in dry weather, you can go there and hook on
Six by six.
Yeah, actually, they're at 34, they're about 28, which is, uh, in the, uh, I'll take it over. No, but, uh, I can't hear you. I said the revised plan, play, looks like it places the house and septic further away from the body of the property. So we said you remove the house just the septic, a few, few, some
Yeah.
Okay, um, ask if there's any questions in the audience, and then
Anybody on lot nine, anything on lot nine?
Do I know what purpose is, because we're being told shut up, and you don't want to help us? Because in theory, in lot nine, it's supposed to run towards my property. They're taking all their water, placing that underground, underground as well. I've heard it's sold by a builder, a very effective builder, my dude, that every time you put a foundation in the mound, the water pressure that it pushes. I did have a slight water problem. I have a three foot water problem. Three to four foot water problem in my basin. So where is all this water that lot nine is also, uh, mid the pond, a natural pond, the silt fence is going to be right through that natural pond, and when they put up the new silt fence for the new builder, they took the whole bucket to work and put the silt fence right behind the, under the bucket. They literally went down with the bucket and dug a new hole behind the existing fence.
Nice question. When you open that?
This is happening all along. I have requested a cease and desist for this property. I've left this, so I'm gonna request a cease and desist. I've called the Conservation Commission, I've complained one, I've called everyone, and you know what I get told? Oh, the builder has money, they might have an attorney, it's nothing you do. That's what a lot in this house is all about. Every department in this town has to go to another department. Nobody wants to be going for this. I'm six feet below a road, I'm six feet below multiple houses. Who wants to be there? Who wants to be there?
Here's my, here's my last question.
Okay. I was five minutes out of that house.
I had the same problem with that hundred foot stall that's seven years ago, that I was taken out of my house on the front of a paywall.
Yep, you were, so you first thought, you know, that that roof ran from the corner of my property right across to the back, and where that was, it was in lot 4. That is the lowest spot on that street. My yard and her yard were the same height. Now there is a six foot wall between
It's 100 yards from yours right now.
What?
The elevation to this land is high, I believe yours right
If I stand in my backyard, the elevation of that one is right here on my chest.
It's six feet.
Right here on my chest.
But they have
So when we turn those nine, I'm gonna be able to walk to my pack wall and go with, hoo hoo, I can disappear.
The grade
That's what's gonna happen.
The grade of that lot is exactly the same as it was before they decided to build
And I've been fighting since before you guys let this happen. This is what nobody understands. We've been fighting all along, and we get this definitely all along. Kevin knows how long I've been running, I spoke to Kevin about it, the building department knows how long it's been
The complaints should have been raised when they built the
Um, the complaints have been made all along, my son is down 19. My son has been wrong with the complaint since the beginning. I've gone to the T E P. Okay, so you say they want to reconstruct wetlands, that whole property was wet, I watched them coming out to put a road in. I have pictures of it all, I have pictures of this entire mess documented all the way through.
Hey, my only question?
All the way through.
Have you drained your roof six feet deep and threw a well, and you guys raised your roof six feet, so the same amount as what happened, you raised on six feet, put a well on six feet, now you're back at this side, did you raise?
And this was not six feet below that, right here. My backyard, I never saw it, I didn't go in my backyard.
So, um
Cheryl, are you gonna show us where you are relative to this?
I'm right over the stone wall from that one.
Right there?
I'm right, right over the stone wall.
Yep. He'll point it out.
So, here's lot nine, and this is, the, the blue is correct?
I'm the blues.
Okay, so this is
This lot, this road hits the corner of our property, right there. This overflows into my yard already. What's gonna happen when you put two houses? I hate to tell you, but their silt fence line, this right here probably is a pond. Their silt fence goes right from the middle of the pond. I have pictures of that that I can show you. Mr. Ringer as well knows that this was a pond. I'm gonna be sitting, I'm gonna put numbers on me.
Is it a waterfall, is it a pond?
No.
No, it's a pond, it's a natural big giant die in the ground.
There, in the front of the lot there, there is, that was the original wetland that they had the wetland crossing, and that is where they did some of their, um, wetland repotation as well.
Okay. Now, for the drainage, if you can explain it, on that particular lot, how would it affect her, or would it affect her?
For the drainage, actually, um, the soils here are very good, it's actually a sandy soil. Um, we couldn't pull the perk test here, the water drained right out in less than two minutes an inch. Um, the road is actually that tight because of groundwater. We don't, I don't ever propose to put a foundation inside groundwater. Here, the bottom of the, the slab is actually three feet higher than groundwater that we did test with and identified.
The lot as it stands, is it, is, is the, this gonna be modified or, or, except for the digging of the foundation?
No, the
In other words, not, no more land is gonna be filled in?
There will be, uh, some filling in the backyard, just to give it a flat backyard. Um, but, as you can see here, the existing grade goes south or towards the blue property, so we have, our proposed grating follows what it is doing right
I have a question.
So they don't want me out?
I have a question. So, okay, wait, so, explain that. So, grading does go towards her?
The existing grade flows towards, flows south, uh, towards, um, the muddy property. However, it's actually a lot steeper than it is right now, so we're actually gonna be leveling it to have a backyard, which actually increases, which increases the amount of time that any rainfall would be on the ground. So, there will actually be a lesser runoff effect, uh, on the surface when we're talking about rainfall.
So, but as, as you're designing this, they, they're concerned, are they gonna be impacted?
Oh, yeah, because what he's telling you is he's putting in a, a yard inland, it's already below my yard. It's already below the level of my yard. I walked over there, and I stepped over it, and I walk in, I can walk down this path on, and you can't see me anymore.
Kevin, I don't know if you've been to my house or not, if you go on that back lot, or if you go on the
Kevin, is it, we ducking down for the water in the basin, I read that
There, if you go in my backyard, in the backyard, okay, this is my backyard, I'm sitting right here. Your guys' stable right there, it's letting, probably down the road maybe a little more. Now, when bending the road, log that, okay, I know that in the road, I'm friends with that in the road. The road up here, the pay growth, the fellow pay growth, the black table, it comes off the black table, six feet, if not eight to 10 feet, before you get to your fence. I will go in the morning, take a picture, put it up, because everyone you guys have on here. It's not like, it's common sense, if you raise it at all, you're gonna be above my backyard. No matter what way you pitch it, it's common I think. If you pitch the backside, that's, that's the other side of the lot, that's not on my side, and you pitch the road tire, and then that side tire, it's gonna come I think. I don't care if you put 10,000 pipes on it, everything, it's coming I think.
My backyard's gonna be in the middle of a six foot wall.
Well, I'm sure that as an engineer, he would be able to determine Because
They were
How to move that water?
They were to have problems with water runoff over there.
How about this, if that's the case, um, this is actually another thing, I'm pretty sure Barry Conroy is the one that put the pipes in the ground, I grew up with his kids. They literally said, because my house used to be a potato farm, I'm pretty damn sure.
Mm-hmm.
It was so soft back then, they had to add fill, like, fill that would actually hold with what they're trying to do, everything kept caving in, whatever the hell they tried to, kept caving in, because of how soft all of it was.
All of the vegetation on that lot is upland vegetation.
Well, that, well, that land was, was
The grade, the grade, that's what the grade was when they built the road, and the grade hasn't changed.
The grade is higher than it was when they
A house put on, that's it.
Either way, like
You've been on that lot for 15 years.
The grade is higher than they built the road. I have a plan, I'm supposed to be a bricklayer in here, that had the equipment plans in front of here, that told me they brought in up to six feet of fill for that road.
Either way, like you said, if he has to alter that at all, if you go look at that lot, it's a slope to the bottom of the fence. If he doesn't have to alter it, what's the foundation gonna be five feet, six feet high on one side, and it has to be 24 inches above the concrete, uh, the road lanes, right? The road elevation has to be 24 inches up. So if that's the case, you're gonna have a foundation that's two feet of the ground on one side, six feet on the other side, and then if you walk out, you throw it, it's on your face, because there's another four feet down, and you're gonna go. You can't make a flat backyard without knowing my property. There's no possible what? So if you're gonna make a flat, or a flat backyard, and the septic's toward the front or the back of that place?
But
Probably not, because that's the only place you would
You're gonna try and
The water runs in your backyard now.
Oh, it runs in my backyard. If I
It pours in my backyard.
Yeah, if I didn't, if I didn't have water my entire life, and there wasn't a massive firm at that place, I'd cry and swimming at my house, that's
Mm-hmm.
It's ridiculous, and no one really hears, like, if anyone, like, if I, want me to go free and rent the freaking water, and add some water in the lot, and then you'll see, it'll all go on to my house. There's really, like, no key.
This town, the man is a coward, he can't
I mean, I literally knew the house was gonna sit there, rotting to the ground, because I was told my house is built to look. If that's the case, then the times change, not in back in 1973, when the house began to be built, by the way.
Mr. Prophet said it, he manned on his fault. Mr. Prophet, when you, every time you was
Yes, yes, I was.
Okay, so sign out here.
90% of this is outside of our jurisdiction.
So hey, if you do that then, why didn't I say that?
90% of this is outside of our jurisdiction. Why didn't I say something?
Exactly, this is
Your father, your father and your grandfather were both there.
His father was there?
His father was there and his grandfather.
Was he indicted?
His father was even born when that house, Bob's house was built.
Was he indicted?
He wasn't
As, as I'm going through the map again, 90% of this lot is outside of our jurisdiction. A lot of that area which he has, or which shows some contour of land, is beyond conservation jurisdiction. The only area that is in our jurisdiction is a, a small area to the left of the proposed house, which is, uh, not too far from the septic system. There is some contour, and I guess it's already, the land is already contoured.
No.
But the work, okay, can you give me a minute? Is this already in existence right here? Is this already in existence?
These proposed grades?
Right.
No, these, these later grades are the
This
So, this here is, this here is non-existent, right here.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, uh, what is the existing grade right here?
So the existing grade in the front here, this is elevation 30.
The dock line
Okay, 30, and so you're gonna build it up how mu, how many feet?
So that's gonna be 36. The existing road now is 35.
You're gonna let him finish?
The existing road here that is, this is here?
Yeah.
This is elevation 35.
So you wanna build it up to the road?
Correct.
You're gonna build it up to the road, and you, and this water is, if it hits, if it hits the street, it's going to go this way into the detention basin here.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, and what about, okay, so this way, it, as it stands right now, all of this water is, even at its current elevation, is still going in that direction.
Yes.
Um, is there some way, now, again, we can only deal, we're only dealing with this portion right here, because this is out of our jurisdiction right here. Our jurisdiction is 100 feet from the wetlands, so
James, don't forget this, protect the
That's way in the back though, that's
On the side.
It's right here, this is all protected as well, sir.
Okay, right here.
And the silt fence line is moved over this way, or like, it's like up.
Um, okay, so, what I, what I'm looking at, can this be burned in such a way to detour water, instead of going that way, to go into a catch basin and then, uh, brought to the, I'm gonna say the east of the property? Again, I'm not dealing with this here at all, because that is beyond our restricted area.
They can't touch any of this, because that's all wet.
Anything that's burned here, um
Well, this broom is going this way.
The road already comes in, and existing, this is 35, so it's graded down to what's here, so this is up five feet. Uh, i- if you did do a burn there, it's just gonna create an issue in that area, I'm fairly certain. If, we have, see this is 36 in the rear door, it naturally comes down, this is six feet higher than the front of the lot. Everything naturally comes down and comes this way. Uh, I would have to do some sort of calculation as well, to see what is there for the detention basin, that could be a lot
This isn't working, you know, the state race, about how many people can, can congregate in one spot? Uh, i- if you, if you, Mr. Blue, if you'll give your presentation from over there, please, and this, you, you also, please.
Can we see this?
Turn it on, turn it on.
It's right there.
Okay, so you're not interested in
It's a green line, and I, I'm talking about the green line over there, on that mound.
I, I can hear it. Yeah, he'll show it to you. So, what's that, the ground?
This is existing ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why is that 40 feet there? Why is that 40 foot of that from there?
No, that's, that's just a dimension to the
Oh, for my ground?
See, all this, this is our property, this is all the water runoff, that's the direction of flow. This is the back corner, where the corner of the wall is, where the lot is lined in, my boat, between the two lots, between the people
So, it's coming to us.
So, all this is coming to us.
Regardless.
In fairness, um, the existing
There's only around
The existing grade, I go about five feet below me in that pond.
And my yard dips, my yard doesn't go any higher than the so-called ground rule of this place.
I was trying to show you the stone wall, the natural elevation, but you did not want to see it, so.
Yeah, so if, say it's even back here, so this is the back of the lot, or whatever, uh, or this is, either way, it's coming to me.
You walked right through so much property right now, and you walked two feet in the ground dips.
So, if this land is lower than your property, that should be absorbing the water and
How is that gonna absorb the water when that's a natural pond? And now they're gonna put fill in, and they're gonna put a house in, that works just with the hydrofracture, because I've already been told that, pushing the water out to us, man. How is that gonna work for my back corner, with no more houses, it's already flooding? I also, I would love to know, because you asked us to come up with conditions and repotations for all the neighbors, what are those, to stop this from happening? Because if it's in anything in any of these lots, then it's gonna protect anybody else. I had from the first accusation I have from the first accusation, three. I have turtles in my yard as soon as they started digging. There are two people in that subdivision right now that have turtles in their yard, as well as the gentleman over here now, I heard, because when they started playing here, they was not. That box was to our danger.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I don't.
Lot nine.
Mister, who's calling girl over here?
I'm in chat. Lot nine.
From the foundation.
Fit where it's both.
Wherever the property point at, this is.
It fit where it's both.
So. To my house.
The elevation here is, um, thirty-seven.
Everything you have, it doesn't show the sub-. It doesn't show the sub-.
Doesn't show.
Siltation.
Siltation.
Back here.
Thirty-six. So it's the same height as, as this.
Oh, this is the fifty.
I don't have problems at all.
Two and eight.
Your house.
Those are later than.
West.
Yeah, I'm, so my house is.
You, you never let that lot of the house.
I do.
There's plenty of backyard, you know.
Any, our back corner is flat.
So, this is my back corner, right here, this is all down, my whole backyard from here to here is all downhill, pretty much. Well, if this is the lot, this is the whole damn thing.
Your house is that close to that lot?
Yeah.
I don't find that they ever find it.
Hey, you've had the floor long enough, please, let somebody else have a turn.
The whole lot is my backyard, from here to here, and further. So, I literally have a notice, and it all, if this is the runoff, it's literally all running at me. It's, if that's ground level, and the house is gonna be higher than ground level.
The next one is a habit change. The grade portion there is the grade was there just across the.
Right, but they changed the grades, so.
They made the front of the fallings there, so it's, 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 you know, as far as your grain problem, so. It's been there, it's been.
Right, so.
The ground is like a six feet high.
Water runs downhill, it's been running downhill since before you built the house, and it's gonna continue running downhill with the house where it is.
So it gives the right, or some of it, to the way you put it on that field, so.
Change that.
Yeah, but if you put a house, it's gonna be higher than mine.
He doesn't understand, mine is six feet below, it's below the street, that's what he's not understanding. Our level is six feet below that, you know what I'm saying? Even if it's.
Guys, alright, we're lot nine.
Emotion.
Yeah. I want to entertain emotion. Emotion, in emotion.
Do we need to add the siltation?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Do we need to add the siltation when you're telling me? The silk barriers, do we need to add that?
Yeah, we, we, yeah. Add the silt, uh, silt fence, so.
There's still fence there, everywhere. It's a full bucket worth further back than it was. That's what I was trying to show you in the picture.
But it's not, he's saying it's not on the plan.
Oh, it's there, it's there, but it's a bucket worth back there than it was, when they put it back up. I have, I have it all. I've got me in it all.
Is there a motion, what, some, do you make a motion?
I'm waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve lot nine. Second. Nurse Wade, can you guys plan?
I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
It's October seventh, uh.
Opposed? Carriage, motion carriage, thank you, Mister Senator.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, um, final minute.
What is it?
Final minute here.
Final minute?
I have a card on the card.
What was the name of the construction company?
Uh, that is on Mars, Mars.
No, construction company, who would be building the area?
Uh, Rick, Rick was, uh. I believe he gave you this as your phone number.
No, he's not, he's outside. This is the site, this is the mayor's development, and he's the one who told me. Who was the construction company that actually put them in? Built the house.
So if he's the one that built the house, there's something, there's something. There's something.
They're a construction company?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So he's the name of the guy, he's, he won a prize, he's in the building.
Okay.
Bill, Bill. Before you move on to these two last items, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to approach the commission.
Absolutely. Please, whoever, whoever's term that is, come on up.
Detective, POC development, um. Sorry, I got some help.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen, Detective POC Development, uh, this is the construction property that you wanted to, uh, for history, that has been seriously approved, uh, order of conditions, uh, from this commission. Uh, this is Joe Baptista, uh, this is a twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-two point four seven acre lot, uh, that, um, POC Development, um, had, is, was in the process of permitting, and Mister Baptista is expected, intended buyer for the lot. Um, we just wanted to come before the board, and we really appreciate that you're seeing us tonight, we don't have another agenda. Um, we're just here, uh, basically to, to cut, uh, to measure twice and cut once, you want to get some feedback, some input from the board on, uh, particularly two issues. Um, the, the lot question has a, a weathering question for a, for a seasonal stream. Um, I read the order conditions, the, the developer is under the understanding that they're, um, or, or trying to get clarification as to whether or not, uh, first, if there's a fixed date after which we're not supposed to, um, cross the stream, or if it's, it's just based on if the weather screen is flowing. Uh, given the passage of time, and now that we do have an intended buyer, we would like to see if there's some work that we can do, uh, on the other side of the stream, uh, even through the winter and, and the early spring. Uh, so, one is, one thing we're looking for clarification on is, if, if the, if there's a fixed date during which we can't cross the stream, and then secondly, we're gonna ask, we're asking if the board has any input as to what might be, uh, an acceptable means of a temporary crossing for the stream until we have the culvert rebuilt. We're, we're told that, uh, from the engineer, it may probably take at least three months for the culvert to be designed and built, and we'd like to see if there's something that we can do in the meantime, uh, on the opposite side of the stream. And, and if there is something that would be satisfactory to the board for a temporary crossing, until the culvert, uh, in its final form and design is constructed.
Here's my problem, I have, and your request.
Sure.
How long ago did you issue the order of conditions for that property?
Uh, I believe it was earlier this year, probably in March.
Two thousand? Oh, it's before that. And now, and now we're coming to the rainy season. With, the last time I was there, that water was flowing, it must have been a hundred feet wide. That, that water was flowing so strongly, this, I'm talking about last, uh, I don't know, last year, maybe December, I don't know, or whatever it was. It was prior to, to the order conditions going out, um, but it was, there was a tremendous amount of water there. And it has been ample time with this season, as dry as it has been, to do all the work you need without running through, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna get some heavy rain, and we're gonna have mud and earth flowing all the way down into the Sacred Ganson River, which is public water supply. That's where I stand, so you, so, so, Charlie, I don't know, I, did I cut you off? Or did I? My point was that there's been several years in the past since we issued the order of conditions.
Um, not for TLC development, it was just earlier this year, I believe, that, uh.
Now, it's been more than a year, do you agree with that?
I don't, can I follow up on my phone, like, I, I had it, and then the website actually closed.
I don't, I think it was over a year ago.
Yeah.
The question was, and it's been a year, but, that you had time to order the twenty foot, uh, structure.
No, I, I, and again, we, we didn't proceed till we knew what we were going to do with the lot.
I know you're here representing your client, but your client had, had plenty of time to get what he needed to make the crossing and do everything. I'm not willing to have a temporary crossing myself, but there's five minutes here. Okay, and, and I gave, I gave my opinion already, when that, when that water starts flowing, any temporary crossing could well be wiped out, or any access to the crossing, it, it, it has to be done, the roadway, uh, because that water was, was a hundred feet wide flowing, the last time I was there looking at it. There, there is a channel there.
Mm-hmm.
There is a channel, but the water was way, way outside of that channel, and, and it would take everything with it. You have to build, you have gotta put the culvert in place, build the roadway to contain the flow, uh, whatever it is, because there would be some backup when we have heavy rain, and if you have a temporary, you're not gonna have the roadway properly done, and you're gonna get washing all the way to the east of the Sacred Ganson River.
And I'm gonna go much over twenty, twenty-four foot. And even if you go over twenty-four foot max, you're still gonna have three foot off each side, so you're gonna be like eighteen, nineteen feet. And, uh.
And now it's gonna be, if they're gonna make a roadway, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be up to our state fireman's home, because they're not gonna have, uh, uh, the fire trucks out there.
You're gonna do it on, you know, yeah, yeah. And what they call digging that, you tend to build crosses, but, if that's why like that, you know what I mean, and you're gonna have to go three or four mounds high, and by the time you're all done, then if you come down and make sure we have water, you can take them off.
Yeah, like I said, the last time, it was an area wider than this, much wider than this room, flowing. And you come right out of the, uh, uh, the bed of the, of the legs.
They made that up, they made that up to forty foot wide, that all the machines would cross, but, you know, you would go across it, you have to ten times more than the will to get the culvert, so.
Anyway, we're, we're only trying to do this as a responsible man, that, that's.
No, but, but I think we're giving you, uh, our opinions, and this is gonna be, uh, I don't know what your plans are for the other side, I would assume either a housing development, or more than one house that would appear.
No, no, it's not.
You might, I don't know.
No, not at all.
So members of the board, so I, I've entered the agreement to purchase this property, this twenty-two and a half acres. I take this down a little bit?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it was originally approved for three lots, um, with a shared septic system. My goal is one house up here in the back, for my wife and I, and with the two lots down here, in the future, if our son, our daughter, everyone that build next to us, run the four-strenger pipe, cap it off with a manual on both ends, as a proof, and leave it at that if they ever wanted to build down there. If they didn't, I say with the twenty-two and a half acres, my wife and I are happy, we're set back on the road. My goal right now is in order some conditions, it was, uh, May through October was the work that could be done, November through April, because of the stream, the wet season, was, was, was that, that river crossing right here, was, so, we're coming in asking to have some temporary to get back here, I, I wouldn't be looking for a building permit from the town until, at best, sometime in March or April of next year, at the earliest.
Uh, when you, when you wanna go back there, what?
You're about the original that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm, I'm the purchaser of the property, looking to build our house.
Or, or you, thinking of buying the property or?
No, I have it under agreement. I have the property under agreement.
But you, you knew what you were buying.
I know that, yeah, I, I do, I do.
Good things by the applicant.
Yeah, and we accept it, is.
That's a hell of a crossing, even with that, that stone structure, the country.
Oh, it's not cheap, the culvert's not cheap, no.
He knew that and he applied, now you bought it, you own it.
I throw my hand to mercy of the board, right, that's what I'm doing right now.
You need to do things, but it is what it is.
Right, I gotta get it, absolutely get it. I'm just trying to clear some of the land back here, so the operator can get back there, design the house plan, and so hopefully the spring season, we're ready to start.
Before we move towards, uh, approaches, the previous owner tried to cross that, even without permission. Was not very cooperative, now, then we've got a man who came before us, and presented a decent plan, well thought out, then we accept it. I can't see changing it. I know it may be bad for you, but it was, and it's not your fault, but it is what it is. As far as I'm concerned.
Any question, did you, did you perk it or anything, cut that anything?
Always with perk that, uh.
I'm explaining back.
How did you get that here, the?
What?
No, with the machine, did you cross the river?
I, I didn't perk it, but it's been perked.
No, we, we did cross it.
This, this stream is bone dry right now, today, bone dry.
It is bone dry.
It's bone dry.
Where is bone dry?
This stream is bone dry today.
Yeah.
Bone dry, it's bone dry.
Even because the second inch of the river is dry as stone. Yeah, and every river, almost every river in Texas.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's bone dry right.
So they, they did it there on that front road. Right, exactly, and, and also, if you remember the history of the property, there was, you know, long before we were the owners of it, it was, the stream was crossed many, many times for logging, or, or the area where the stream is, in dry seasons, it was, it was a logging road that, uh, freighted the stream long before we owned it, uh, and it's, it's not like the stream has ever been completely untouched, it's just that it wasn't, it wasn't regulated, it was done before you permissioned to any.
Okay, and, and like, how we got rid of it was with, two owners ago, who tried to do it without permits, and made a mess, knocking down trees and everything else on, on his access to it, and, uh, we stepped in and, with enforcement orders and, and, and that water.
Set a temporary net.
It was just.
You can, we used to go really.
I mean, tremendous flow, tremendous flow, you cannot imagine, if you look at it now, that little, it's probably about six foot wide, uh, uh, there.
Yes, right.
And that just went, and it was flowing.
Okay, four by sixteen. But strictly, our order of conditions was just ordered April of this year, it's not like we've had this order of conditions for a year and a half and. At this rate, it probably went out of the street. So, you're probably looking at fifteen or sixteen, and then, you know what I mean, it's, it's a travel lot. But to stay out of the problem.
So when is your, when is the culvert gonna be done, who ordered the culvert?
We, uh, TLC Development, the president of.
I'm sorry?
TLC Development, President of the Order Development, the owner, she took with engineer, finished designing, you know, trying to finalize, but we're sold.
That was a mistake, the owner, if you bought it, they should have ordered it and put it in place.
And like I say, it's, uh, I thought it was a small, you know, man there, but if it wasn't.
Doing okay, Charlie?
Um, I think he has his answer for us, I mean, this is, this is not even a, this is a walk-in to, to, to give an idea. We're not, you know, there's no, what, it didn't come in with a, a motion to amend or anything else, and I think he has, he has our thoughts on it.
Yeah, we, we would just hear, we, for me, that would be true.
We would have to change the other conditions. And then we have to apply, in writing, and, and that's not so, this is just a very formal meeting of the hearing. This is just, yeah, this is a very formal. That's for the take time, by the time it all comes to fruition, we're. They'll have, they'll have their, you know, have their culvert.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna take you two to three months to, to, uh, to apply for a new hearing, by the time you get, by that time. It's going to take you two to three months to, to, uh, to apply for a new hearing, by the time you get, by that time, you'll have the culvert in place.
Plus what you would need, you know, I thought it was just a small crossing.
No, no, no.
You'd probably spend, probably the minimum of close to forty grand just to buy the mats.
To get what you want done, you'd have to file an amendment for an amended order of conditions. It would have to be advertised, you'd have to have a hearing. And by that time, the rain's going to be back, and it won't be dry. I mean, I feel sorry for you, because... You had big plans, they'll still be able to do all the, but not right away.
Yeah, it's just November, April, right, that's, so just this month.
But that's the only thing I'm looking for clarification on, if, if it is still dry in November, if it hasn't, if, if there's still the way it is now, because we haven't had rains, can we cross it after November first, is that, is that, is that a hard date regardless of the actual physical conditions on the ground? I did not see that in order of conditions. I didn't see a date, I know it was probably talked about at the hearing, but is it just based on the physical quality of the...
Of the stream.
Of the stream or lack thereof, or, or is it, just fix and deal? Did it say on the, did you look back at the meeting minutes, or did it say, or certain, so they say, the end of October? I did not look at the meeting minutes, I know that's, I do not see it in order of conditions as, as a condition, that that's a drop dead date regardless of the stream is completely dry.
When do you expect the culvert in?
If we're told three months out now, we'd probably be looking at the middle of winter.
So... If it comes in, get, get ready on the, on the edge of the property and...
But if it's not dry?
Is there, is there a way to get dispensation from this commission to at least be able to clear it back there while it's still dry?
Even if it's after November first, if there, if the stream is not...
This, this is bone dry right now.
Yeah.
You know?
As long as you're going to be able to ruin it, you can, you can trim with, you know, chainsaws, uh...
Rubbing stump, or...
I'm sorry?
Rubbing stump, all the way back, or...
I don't know, what do you think, Charlie, on that, Robert? Uh, if, if it's going to be on the roadway, that's eventually going to be done.
Yeah, but it, it's, I don't know if you can...
You've got, you've got to bring in the equipment, and the equipment would be going over the culvert, so that, that would ruin it. You know, the, the big thing is, you've got to get the culvert in place, and then, and then when your equipment goes over, you're, you're all set, there's your roadway, or driveway. If you, if, if you're going to grub, you're going to go over the dry stream then and ruin it. You've got, I mean, whatever, I don't know how deep those, uh, the banks are, I think they were a couple of feet, but you would ruin it. We can't legally give an admission tonight anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's not on the agenda, you can't make any decision.
Well, but to that, they, they would have to find, for right, for right.
I think there's a lot of small platforms, so we can see what they were facing, if they filed a notice, to amend the notice?
No. No. I'm a no. I'm sorry? You're sorry?
Charlie.
No, I can't hear you. We can't amend anything tonight. No. But so that you know what they would be facing, if they filed up an amendment, this is a no. Oh, okay. You've got four other hands. No, okay, I would say, I would say no. No, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to change it. Do what you feel like do. No, I don't want to change it. That's still true.
No.
There's only two, I suppose. No, it's, it's four.
Well, we, we appreciate that, so nothing, so you're telling us not to go down that road, because there's no point, so... Do we have clarification on what happens after November first, if the, if it's still dry?
If it comes in, give, give somebody a call, and we'll see what, what happens.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I think that's the best way to do it, if we don't get, I mean, we're supposed to get more rain, but this next rain that we're going to get is just going to go right in through us. Because we are anywhere from ten to twenty inches down. Depending upon, if it was twenty down, if it was ten down, we're somewhere in between. And, uh, because what's going to happen, maybe there'll be water, maybe there won't be water, I don't know, but we're in an extreme drought.
So do what we can, when we can, don't, don't destroy the bad, obviously, or whatever.
Yeah.
And, no, you can't do temporary crossing. Okay, that's...
Okay, thank you for coming, and we're going to our agenda.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Right, yeah.
Okay, Charlie, I'm here, brothers. We glad they refuse to accept a show like Mayo on the way to the city. If it is attacked, we go attack it. Okay, did the police go with them? I don't think the police had to do anything. DEP's good, we can get lawyers to send in a letter and threaten to, uh, flying under our bail law. We can get DEP, uh, it's there, it's thousands, it's ten grand or whatever for, uh, this event. Well, uh, maybe we should, let's see if DEP's going to do, do some work.
Good luck.
I tried to clarify with the post office, there's no stamp on it, and the girl told me they have to check up with the mail carrier. I know they have, well, they didn't accept it, because all the others came back stamped, he accepted the original sentence, I, but it would have been stamped as well. I'd love to pursue, uh, DEP, uh, and see what they can do, it's their regulation. Yeah, I think that that's, uh, because he's not, he's not going to do anything else, because he knows his family's home. Always, always are, they're old and they're cranky, and, what can I say?
It's part of the, it's part of the Sacred Gansett watershed, though. It's part of the Sacred Gansett watershed. I don't write that, that's...
I don't know, I think, I think we should follow that. Your bill's got the number. The next one down is, uh, Arujio Farm. The stormwater committee newly founded by, uh, what was I selecting? It's giving, uh, Arujio a hard time about his, uh, solar farm, and building, yeah. And they were wondering if he had, uh, stormwater conditions. Well, we came, put up an board, came to the certification commission, and positive that he has, uh, the right to put his solar farm next to his business. So we're on it, really? I, I've sent them all leaves, made sure that we had on it, and there's a lot. And even the letter, uh, from the campaign board approved the stormwater, uh...
Your fault.
Yeah. And that's all I've been saying. And the last thing I had to handle is the trench. Bill, was there something going on at Berko today or yesterday?
Well, they had an influx of crabs over there a couple of weekends, they had all like hundreds of them.
Influx of what?
Crabs.
Oh, crabs, oh.
People get crabs, so I thought it would be a good idea to close it down for a little while. Give the crab a break, because they're a pest, and perhaps just stay and eat them right down at the shore.
It's important you're always going to be a neighbor of those.
No. No, it's not, it's never going to that place, it's going to County Street.
Owns a piece of property, did below it?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Thirteen acres, used to be the pathway for it.
Thirteen point eight.
Yep. The order replied, of whom, Bill did it.
Okay, uh, we ready for June?
Make a motion. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, all in favor? Aye. We're done.